Good morning and best to you for this Wednesday. It's time for the Town Meeting Talk Show we've been promising you here. And a very interesting one as always when we get to visit with Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska. It's a difficult topic, but one of those where the more information you amass, the better prepared you are for the challenges that will come if someone in your family or perhaps not in your family, but that you're close to should develop one of these conditions, which according to many reports is about one of the hardest things you can deal with within a family if, especially if you don't have any preparation, if you're not sure what's to come. And that's always Gay's main goal when we get together is to share that information, tell you about resources that are available. I don't know if they charge for any of them. I think all of this is free. And so she'll talk about seminars and webinars that are coming up and various assets on their website that can be helpful, ways to get in touch with them if you have any questions. And the program, of course, is brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, which is your local provider of wireless communication and data. And that local provider is the provider of your local talk show. So we can bring you things of interest to Cordovans on demand, of course, and we'll remind you going into this that if you ever have an idea for a program, we are more than happy to try to do something about that. So you just feel free to let us know. So you'll want to have your notepad handy, or if everything just goes too fast, remember, of course, this program will end up in our archive as well at youtube.com/cordovatv. So that if you hear something valuable that you want to pass along to somebody else to help them bring some, help bring them some knowledge, perhaps comfort, and certainly assets in dealing with a loved one who may be in the early stages of dementia or later on in the process, you can point them right to this show on the YouTube archive, youtube.com/cordovatv. So let's have our chat. Gay Wellman, Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska, on the Town Meeting Program here on KLAM. Gay Wellman, very nice to have you with us here again. And let's talk for starters about, I mean, it seems like every time we visit, you've got an entire quarter of programs and opportunities coming up. So what's, say, coming up in the first quarter of next year? What can we look forward to in 24?
Well, it's really good to be back with you guys. I'm sorry it's taken so long to make it happen, but here we are again. Isn't that fun?
Yeah.
Okay, I always enjoy it. So we've got all kinds of stuff lined up for next quarter. There's, we're doing in person as well as online. And of course, for those of you folks in Cordova and any of the other listening areas, it would be online. We've gotten really good at those.
Yeah, since the pandemic, absolutely.
Yeah, I know. The pandemic was actually the best thing that came out of that was getting us all up to date on how to work with, with the webinars and things online.
Sure.
And we've gotten pretty good at it. So I encourage people to attend. It's amazing how close you can get to people in little square boxes.
Yeah. It's kind of like Jeopardy, but you know, like the Hollywood Squares, except without Paul Lind and a whole lot more heart.
Right, 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 right. No advertising, no advertising.
Yeah, or the Brady, the Brady Bunch of Better Health.
Exactly. Okay. As we've done in the past, we offer a selection of different topics based on different days. You know, starting from when does forgetting become a worry, making visits positive, sleep and dementia promoting a good night's sleep, that sort of thing, challenging behaviors, we usually have something on that. We usually have one on communication tips of some sort. There's an end of life one this next time, meaningful activities, next steps after a diagnosis, that sort of thing, even one on downsizing. And of course, all, any of us that are getting older could take advantage of that. And then there's also professional webinars. We offer those, again, they're actually offered two days, two times, one on Tuesdays and one on Thursdays. And you don't have to be a professional. Actually, I think of family caregivers as the professionals, really. So anyone's welcome to come to these. It's just that the focus is a little bit more on, on people that are working in the field, like at your long-term care facility there.
Sure.
Your acute care and a long-term care facility. So, and this, this next month is gonna, the next quarter rather, it's gonna be music and dementia care. And anybody who's paying attention to anything is gonna find out how important music is in helping, helping folks with dementia, with any, with the calming them down. A lot of people find that to be useful. I think most of us understand that the right hemisphere of our brain is more active even with dementia, because it's about feelings and rhythm. And so learning how to use those tools, if you have someone you're caring for who's getting upset about things, a lot of people find that if you can find the music that they like, it helps to calm things down. So music and dementia care is becoming more and more of something you really want to learn about.
I remember not long ago, well, no, I mean, it is long ago, but one of the first, the first sort of really amazing YouTube videos I ever remember seeing was the, the one where they had a patient that was largely catatonic, just, just sort of sat in the chair. And then they, just as an interesting experiment, they put headphones on with some music they knew that he liked, and he instantly pricked up, started singing. And then afterwards was lucid and was sharing memories about, about that kind of music and when he used to play and that sort of thing. It was amazing.
Yeah. And there's, there's more and more of those coming out where they're recognizing that the value of stimulating that part of the brain allows them to start using the other side as well.
Yeah, yeah. So you're gonna be focusing on that then. You're gonna focus some on that in the next quarter.
Yeah, that's, that's one, it's in January, on the 16th. So again, if you get to your, if you get to the website, you'll see under professional webinars, and again, anybody can attend those. You don't have to be a so-called paid professional. Family members are, as I said, are the professionals, really.
Sure, sure. And what is the website, by the way? Let's make sure that that's out there.
Yeah, let's do. It's ALZAlaska.org.
Okay. And all of the stuff that we talk about in terms of things that are coming up, online opportunities for interacting classes, all of that sort of stuff is, is right there to be seen in print anytime somebody wants. So ALZAlaska.org.
Yeah, ALZAlaska.org. It'll let you know, get into anything that we're doing. And the gentleman who's managing that now is doing a really nice job with it. This particular calendar, I don't think it's up as a specific calendar that you can print out, but you can find, I did see that you can find the individual present, you know, whatever we're doing in another list. So there's lots of different ways that you can access this information. I like this calendar because it's all right there in front of you, but he hasn't quite got that up yet. He's still working on the draft of that to make sure everything's correct. And it's really easy to use because it's got the link right on it.
Yeah.
So all you have to do is press on the link and away you go. Webinar register, and away you go, you're registered.
Good.
And you'll get Zoom information coming back from Zoom on that.
And people can see all the different topics that are gonna be covered and so forth?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And as I said, if you can't find a specific calendar that has all of it on it in one, you can find it listed as individual things.
Okay.
That's already on. So, and there's other, there's another one, it's called Communication Tips for Caregivers Beyond the Basics. And then Effective Responses When a Person with Dementia Is Agitated, Angry, or Aggressive. So again, and that's, that's the three type, three professional webinars that are being offered next quarter. So.
Okay, good. Well, a lot of good. And, and there are other things on the site that are sort of there all the time that you and I have talked about before, but you know, like Memory Cafe, that sounds kind of fun.
Right, right. And that's something for the, for folks that have, you have somebody at home, or even the Memory Cafe of the folks that are there at the center, at the long-term, you know, where in your hospital.
Sure.
We have, there are people, assisted living homes that attend, and they get, they get the information ahead of time, like for Art Links. If they sign up for it, they can, Janice will send, send information about what's needed. In other words, the supplies that they might need for the Art Links. And then the Memory Cafe is just getting hooked up, and it's usually music and different activities that are fun, fun, fun times. And so it's kind of entertainment. The other thing I wanted to mention that's really important, any of you that are, especially beginning this journey, and it can be, I'm gonna put a plug in here for any of you who are long-distance caregivers, any of you who are friends or want to learn about dementia, a Savvy Caregiver Program, the six-week class, two hours every week, is being offered in January, from the first, the 17th to February 21, in the evening, from 6 to 8. I highly recommend it for anybody who is connected to anyone that has dementia. The more of us that learn these skills, the better it's gonna be. It works best if you have someone that you, in mind, that you can do the exercises about and things like that. So, you know, but I do encourage people to take a look at that program and, and consider it. So that's, that's what we have.
So that could be anybody, you know, if you're, even if you're just peripherally connected to, to somebody, like you said, long distance away that you don't live with, but are, you're gonna have interactions with, with the person who has dementia, you can be prepared, you know, like for example, and it's, it's funny, with all I've learned from you over the years, I always want to punch my TV when I see one of these depictions in a, you know, whether it's a TV show or a movie, where there's a character with dementia that can't remember something, and, and then the, you know, the person who asked the question or isn't gonna be remembered, you know, it's like, don't you remember? Don't you, you know, we did this.
Yeah, yeah. It's our automatic response, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't you remember? And who is this? Don't you remember her? Who's this? And it's like, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
All you have to do, all you have to do, if you think about it, is put yourself in their shoes.
Yeah.
Or how do we feel when, when we can't come up with somebody's name?
Yeah.
You know, or we can't.
Well, for me, that's a way of life.
Well, I know, I know. And so that we're okay.
Yeah.
JR, we are okay. I'm the same way. It's like coming up with people's names has gotten harder, but it's always been hard. So I'm not terribly worried about it.
Sure. So, but you're right, that is a natural response. It's a national emotional, natural emotional response, if not an especially rational one, but, but the rationality can come from training. So, you know, if you.
Exactly. And it's a kind of, you know, any of this training, we really have to practice, because I still do it. I have a sister who's got dementia, and I have to really watch myself not to say, oh, Nancy, don't you remember? Now, the thing you can do with that, it makes it better, is I remember this, and this, and this. And sometimes that will stimulate, just like the music does, that it'll allow them to be part of it without, without putting them on the spot.
Sure.
We don't want to put somebody with a, with a brain challenge on the spot. If we do, depends on what, how they're gonna respond. Sometimes that'll lead to this thing we call challenge behaviors.
Right.
You know, they'll get upset and, and get fussy about it, or they'll go the other way and get really quiet.
And then the other thing you hear, you know, you see depicted a lot is, is the, a story being retold and, you know, grandpa, you told me that story already yesterday.
Yeah, you wanna just go along with it.
Right.
And enjoy it. That's one of the things that keeps coming up too, is that I, I have two support groups that I do on a regular basis, actually three now, but one of the, one of the participants, one of the caregivers is having a really hard time because her husband is now getting to the point where he's telling stories. He's telling people things that she knows is not true about his life, about what he's done and where he's lived, and, you know, that kind of thing. And she wants to correct him all the time.
Yeah.
And that's not, you don't want to do that, especially not in front. If, depending on who it is.
Right.
You know, if it matters really, and how much of that really matters, but if it's someone that you, you know, that you want to be sure that they have the correct story or they need to have the correct story, then you go, go to them afterwards.
Right.
You don't do it in front of the person.
Sure.
Sometimes it's kind of interesting what they come up with.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, it's what they wanted to do.
Yeah.
Rather than what they've actually done.
And then it just crosses over into.
We get to be whoever we want when we get dementia.
Right. Well, and you see, but the bottom line here that's important is, is that folks realize that there are, there are trainings, that this is something people have known about for a while, and there are trainings and information that's accessible through you guys to help, if you're already in the situation, or you can see it coming with a relative, and you can, you can prepare yourself and go into this with some knowledge.
Yeah, then the more prepared we are with this, as with anything, the better we're going to be, the more successful we're going to be. And we aren't gonna go through that hard time where every time we start to do something, it, the response we get makes things worse. In fact, I was just reading an article that just came out about, about finances and how the sooner you know what's happening, the sooner you can begin planning, because they're saying now that finances are, are to the point where, but dementia adds a whole new dementia, dimension to this cost of care.
No.
They're saying that 60% direct reduction in net worth for someone who has, developed dementia.
Oh, wow.
Over a period of, of a few years. Out-of-pocket costs will double within eight years. Two times more likely to have to enroll in Medicaid within eight years of a diagnosis. So most of us can pretty well guarantee that if you've got somebody who's got, who's developing dementia, that they're gonna have, you're not gonna have enough money to help with their care, because it's so expensive and it's getting worse and worse.
So what's the solution to that? Is there some hope in this?
Not unless things change around in our government.
Oh, it's one of those.
You know, because, you know, I don't know about you, they're, they're trying to, you know, they're trying to get rid of Medicaid. And the concern is that if these costs, if we don't get a handle on this, it's gonna bankrupt Medicaid and Medicare. Medicare is, doesn't really cover much of anything for someone with dementia. And Medicaid, it certainly can help. And you really almost have to have it unless you have some lots of money. Like right now, I'll use myself as an, our family as an example. My sister's in, in long-term care now.
Right.
And she's been for quite a few years. She's already gone through one section of savings that she had, and she has long-term care insurance that's covering about a quarter of what it's costing.
Really?
She's had this long-term care policy, and as soon as we got her placed in a, a facility, because long-term care doesn't cover in-home care.
Right.
At least the one she had, that, that we started having to use it. And we went through it in about a year and a half, a little bit longer actually, about three years, we finally, we've got through the whole amount. And she was, had to go on Medicaid. And then we had, we had, got an inheritance that has now put her off of Medicaid. And so we're now going through another batch of, of money. And I predict that we probably will be out of it again in another couple of years, unless she dies. And so we're running through any inheritance that may have been available, you know, for anybody else or anything else. You can pretty well guarantee that as, that if you're, if someone in your family develops dementia, especially if it's in your immediate family, that you can just kiss any inheritance that you want to pass on to your children goodbye.
Well, what can people do, you know, in terms of talking to, is this something where you have to petition the government, or how do you, how do you push back against this and try and effect some change?
Politics. Getting involved politically and saying, hey, you know, any opportunity you have to support any of the research that's being done, any of the, any kind of events. And actually, the government is trying to do more. They are aware of the fact that this is an issue, at least parts of the government.
Yeah.
So I think anything we can do to, to support any of our politicians that are looking to help the families and our country, because this is gonna, this is not a good thing that's going on here.
Yeah.
And more and more people, of course, are, you know, what we're finding is that there's, by the time you're 80, and we're all living longer these days.
Right.
By the time you're in your 80s, I think it's two out of, out of five people, or three out of five people, depends on who you're talking to, are going to develop some form of dementia.
Yeah.
Now, remember, dementia is this overall umbrella that covers all different kinds of dementias.
Right, not just Alzheimer's.
Louie Body, there's a frontal temporal, and it's funny how, it's interesting to me, I won't say it's funny, but it's interesting how each of these different types have become more, we've become more aware of them. When you have someone like, who's, who's like Ronald Reagan who got dementia, Alzheimer's, where you have the actor who became, the actor recently, and I'm.
Oh, Bruce Willis?
I'm naming at the moment, I should have written those down.
Was it Bruce Willis? Is that who you're thinking of?
What's that?
Bruce Willis, maybe?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
That's it. So we're now becoming aware of frontal temporal.
Yeah.
That's been there all along, but we haven't talked about it. And now with Robin Williams, that's the other one, that was Louie Body.
Oh.
And so now you're hearing much more about Louie Body. And, and each one is a little bit different, there's a lot of similarities, and certainly the way you approach people is gonna be the same, it's just the, it's more about the progression of the, of the, of the dementia, of the changes that are gonna happen, the neural cognitive changes is what they're calling it. It is brain damage, it's brain cell damage, it's cell death, essentially what we're talking about.
Right.
And so when you think about it that way, you can see why a person can't remember things, they just can't.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're gonna get to the point where they can't motivate, they can't start something. They're gonna get to the point where eventually, if nothing else gets them, they'll, they'll die from it.
Yeah.
Because the brain is being constantly affected by whatever, whatever this disease is that they've got.
And so part of the resources then that you offer, and we should mention again as we speak with Gay Wellman of Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska, that, that you do have a website, and do you, do you, you know, you talked about, for example, these different types of dementias. Do you manage to keep that information available and largely front and center on the site?
Yeah, that's generally, we have at least one of the groups, or eventually, you know, during the year, we'll be talking about that. And of course, that's part of the Savvy Caregiver Class, that one of the first classes is about the different dementias and how they're a little bit different. But you can find a lot of this information online now.
Yeah.
And not just on our site, there's, there's, you know, you can get that kind of information about the different dementias. All you have to do is, is Google it, if you're able to do that.
And some of these other topics that you talked about that sounded kind of scary, with the finances or, or trying to cope with the changes in a loved one, you've got support and, and activity, well, not activities as much, but, but support information that, that concern people can access and figure out how to prepare themselves?
Exactly, yes, we do. And, and one of the other things that is new, that since the last time I was there, is we have these things, we're doing this, we're working with a lawyer from Alaska Legal Services. They've, they're doing pro bono work with us. They come on, once a month, we have this legal clinic, we call it. It's a half-hour free consultation. You're not gonna get specific information about, you know, if you have a specific legal issue that you're trying to deal with, but he can give you general ideas of who to go to or where to go, or what you're needing to do. So that's something new that we've just started, about a year or so ago now.
Wow.
And I'm, I'm the one that's kind of facilitating, not facilitating, but setting it up.
Sure.
It can be very popular, it's once a month, the second Tuesday of every month at this point. And it's just, there's just six slots. So sometimes I get overwhelmed with people, and sometimes I have to figure out who, you know, how to fill the slots.
Sure.
But it's, it's been a wonderful service. A lot of people have taken advantage of it, and, and a lot of people, you know, it gives you an idea of where to go.
So something important to, to point out, I guess at this point, is, is that these, these challenging topics, and in some cases kind of frightening things, maybe to do with finances or that, to know that they're, you're not alone if you're dealing with that kind of thing, and that there is an asset like ALZAlaska.org where you can find more information. Now, is there anything else coming up? Again, the full calendar and all the details on the events are gonna be on the site, so people shouldn't feel like they have to remember all of this. We're just trying to kind of prod people and, and get them interested with doing the show. But any other highlights in the coming quarter that you can think of?
Available, you know, Gay Wellman, or GWellman@ALZAlaska.org.
Okay.
Okay, and again, I'm, I facilitate different support groups. Two of the groups that I'm doing, one is on Tuesdays, the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, another was on the second and fourth Saturday of every month. And it's a statewide, on Zoom, partner, in other words, intimate partner, support group, which has been very successful. Started that about two, almost three years ago now, and some of those folks have stayed with me the whole time. It's kind of cool. We also do one, I also do one for grieving. And again, the grieving is not just having somebody die, but we have members that are doing that of the group, but also it's, it's this anticipatory grief that they're talking about, as well as the grief that you're, you're kind of seeing this person in front of your eyes change.
Right.
And so the person that you married, or the person that you're relating to, like my sister, she's changing. And what you, what we need to do is get to the point where we're okay with those changes and not, but there's a lot of grief that goes along with that.
Sure, sure. And it's very gradual in this case, you know, compared to, compared to something more sudden.
It's over time, sometimes it, and it goes up and down, and learning how to identify what stage a person is in, or what level a person is in. TEEPaSnow, you've heard me talk about that, that's another really wonderful resource for people, if you have access to online. TEEPa has a lot of stuff that she's put online that, that is available for people on YouTube. There's another group.
And what was that again now?
Really excellent.
What, what was that, that resource you just talked about? Like, how's it?
TEEPa, TEEPaSnow, it's T-E-E-P-A, Snow.
Okay.
And it's with Positive Approach to Care.
Okay.
We've done a lot of training with her and the organization. They have several people that have been really well-trained, and so there's all kinds of, and we use that, we use the Positive Approach to Care. A lot of the material that we use is coming from, from them. And she's done a really amazing job over the years of putting together, you know, coming up with the ways of working with. When I was coming to Cordova, anybody who remembers my coming over there, and I worked with, with the hospital staff there, I used, it was when I first saw TEEPa, she wasn't, she didn't, hadn't developed her own company like this, but she was working with a nursing home, and she and another nurse did this wonderful thing of, it's called the Accepting the Challenge. And I, we used that training, she had a four-part training module that's still very current, it's very applicable, applicable for today. It's an excellent way of, of learning about TEEPa and the Positive Approach to Care.
Okay.
Accepting the Challenge, I don't know if they still have it there or not, but it's, it's one that, it's one of those basics.
Sure.
And of course, she's developed lots more, and, and it's really exciting to see what she's come up with, as far as how to best work with folks that have dementia. She makes it very positive.
Well, when we were getting started here, or before we started rolling tape, you, you were talking about the importance of screening, and I'm wondering if this, it might be a good time now to kind of get into that a little bit, why it's important, and what should, what would prompt a person to think about beginning that process?
Great, yeah. JR, I think you're learning about me, that if you get me on a run, I'm just gonna keep moving, and so I'm glad you interrupted. Sorry about that. As you can tell, I'm pretty passionate about this myself.
Sure.
Okay, screening, memory screening, we offer those all year round. I can do, we can do it now online, takes a little bit of, of back and forth, but, you know, permissions, and then there's a couple of things that I, I like to send to people to, for them to do themselves, and then, then I, I meet with them after that online. And it works really well on Zoom. So you have to have access to a Zoom, being able to get on some way, either Zoom or Teams, I guess we could use.
Sure.
And, but getting a memory screening done, even if you're not terribly concerned about it, is a really good thing to do, because what you're wanting is a baseline. Once you get that baseline, then you can take a look at, oh, last year I was able to do this, but this year I can't anymore. And it can be just little things. There's a, one of the, one of the screening devices we use that seems to be, that has been tested a lot and seems to be really good at picking up early onset, is, and that's mine, not necessarily early onset in the sense of like 45-year-olds that develop dementia, that's something different.
Yeah.
But the early signs that things may be slipping. So, you know, it's looking at what's changing. I think I just mentioned the fact that I've never been very good at remembering people's names.
Right.
Okay, it's slipping a little bit more than it was before, but not any better, not any more than before. And numbers, I've never been able to do math or do numbers. You know, thank goodness we have these things that, you know, help us with that. But, so I'm not worried about that. But someone who's been an accountant or someone who's always been really good at names or really good at this and they're starting to slip, there's been some changes, that's what you're wanting to look for.
Okay.
If something's changed. And it's called the AD8. And you can look it up or if you're interested, I can send you a copy of it. Get in touch with us. We can send you a copy of it easily.
Okay.
And just the screening is really good to get that baseline and then, then you can check in every so often. They're trying to get doctors to do this, kind of like, you know, we do the domestic violence screening, you know, you can ask when you go to a doctor, I don't know if you've noticed it or not, but are you safe at home? They also do this thing of the dementia screening. We often have to do a, not dementia, I'm sorry, depression screening.
Right.
What they're hoping people, doctors will begin picking up is some of these screening tools. And some of them are.
Okay.
We all should be getting that, kind of routine. You know, you go in, you get your blood pressure, you know, they may or may not look at your ears and your nose and whatever, they may poke at your tummy, whatever, but they need to do some of these other tests as well.
Now, if you go through, like say that somebody goes through one of the assets on your website, which I assume you have, that would link people to memory screaming, screening things, does it, is there an ability to help a person differentiate between might be leading to dementia or Alzheimer's and what might just be sort of normal with aging? Or is there a normal with aging?
Exactly. And that's one of the first, that's one of the mentioned things that I mentioned, that there's going to be a presentation on that. And we usually do that at least every so often. When does forgetting become a worry?
Hmm.
That's going to be on the 5th of January.
Oh, okay. So you've actually got one coming up on that.
From 1:00 to 2:30. And that's, you know, it's good because some of us are kind of worried about, should I be more worried? Or we look at our husbands or we look at our kids, you know, our parents or something and we say, ooh, what's going on there, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And just to have a baseline really helps. We encourage everybody, in November is our, the month that we really push for it. But I think, you know, it doesn't matter when you do it. I have some, I have one lady that calls in every year to get it done.
Yeah.
And she's been fine, you know, every year she's been fine. But she's just staying on top of it.
Good.
And being responsible about it. So, you know, at some point, she may not be fine.
Well, I mean, it's very similar with what they do with a lot of other potential conditions, whether it's colon cancer or, you know, PSA tests for guys and mammograms for, you know, establishing those baselines.
Hearing problems, stuff like that, right.
Yeah.
The sooner you get, if you're having trouble with your hearing, you definitely want to be sure, get a memory screening done.
Yeah.
You know, get a baseline. Because hearing, if you're, if you have any of the at-risk things, like, you know, or you know, sometimes for people that have had mental health issues, that can be, that can be some really kind of hard to differentiate.
Sure.
Like depression.
Yeah.
How do you tell, is it depression or is it, you know, is because, am I having the same kind of symptoms because of I'm actually developing a dementia?
Yeah.
And so the sooner you know, the sooner you know what you're up against.
And.
Dementia, if you have dementia, this is another one that some of us don't realize, is that you're trying to get into a facility, some facilities won't let you in if you have a diagnosis of dementia.
Oh, wow.
Especially these ones that want you to come in when you're still healthy.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you're still independent.
Yeah.
We've been looking at some of those, my husband and I have, we're not really wanting to do it at all, but you know, you never know. And so this one space, they said, you can come in with heart disease, you can come in with liver disease, you can come in with any kind of the other diseases, but if you have dementia diagnosis, you can't come.
Why is that? Is it because the patients become combative or what is it?
It's because it's so difficult and it's, it's makes, it's the care that's needing, that you're needing to provide is specialized.
Yeah.
A person with dementia and some of these other health issues, which a lot of us develop anyway, is much more difficult to deal with.
Hmm.
And much more costly.
But again, for.
They're going to have to have staff. Now, if you come in and then you develop dementia, they're not going to kick you out.
Right.
Though some of them will. That's another thing to watch. Some of them, a lot of these facilities don't take Medicaid. So if you get to the point where you're going to need Medicaid, you often have to find yourself a new place. Or like you said, if your person, if your person is not being, if the staff is not trained well enough, your person is going to become combative or not, you know, or withdraw.
Okay, so again, screening, you know, we've talked about, for people that might be potential caregivers, potential family members of somebody with this, there are a lot of assets on the site, ALZAlaska.org, information on screening. You invited people to connect with you through GWellman@ALZAlaska.org. So while some of this stuff is scary, like we said, and difficult to think about, the opportunity to connect with people who understand it and can provide advice, that's there and we hope folks will take advantage of that, obviously.
Exactly, exactly. And we also have these, lots of, lots of support groups that are listed on this calendar that I was mentioning, different kinds of support groups, not just ours. There's support groups in other communities like Sledotmen and Kodiak that are run by other organizations. Homer has a really nice one there. And we have various ones that are statewide that are available to anybody. The ones that I do are more targeted for partners and/or grieving, the grieving part.
Sure.
Anyway, it's just, a support group is really what you want to be connecting with too, is not just the education, but also the support. Because getting, getting, being able to talk to others that are going through the same thing you are.
Oh, sure.
You mentioned it, JR, and it's absolutely correct. You're not alone.
Yeah.
This is a, this is a challenging for families, really challenging for families because a lot of people kind of start disappearing. They don't know how to deal with it.
Yeah, so they don't come around as often anymore.
Right, right. And so that's one of the reasons I'm encouraging people who aren't maybe the primary caregiver, but are to support people for that person. If you've got a friend or if you've got family members that are having to deal with it in person, you want to get as much education as you can. Just had a wonderful situation where a daughter who lives in another state joined with her mom to take the Savvy class. And it's been a major change for the mom. She said the mom, having her daughter understand what she's going through has been really important.
Hmm.
Because unless you've been there, unless you've done this, you don't get it.
No.
It's really hard.
Yeah, it's difficult to imagine, I'm sure. And again, we talked earlier about how sometimes you get inundated with bad examples, you know, where maybe, maybe a portrayal in a movie or something like that is trying to show that, you know, through the scene is trying to show the challenge that the character asking the question and realizing the dementia, you had a good term, brain challenge. The brain challenged person isn't able to deal with that. And, you know, the story writer's idea is to, is to display what, what the asker of the question is going through. But they end up, I think still, in my opinion, they end up showing a bad example of how to behave.
Some of them do, that's true. I did want to mention one other really good website that people can go to to get some really good ideas, access to YouTube. It's called Careblazers.
Oh.
And it's a YouTube thing. So you just Google Careblazers. And I know, you know, a lot of this stuff is online and I know there's people out there that can't get online.
Right.
Or don't, you know, don't have access to that. So that's where calling our center, I can give you my, my work phone number too, 907-822-5620.
Okay.
And we also have an 800 number that will, you can use to access any of us.
Okay. Yeah, well, and I'll put all of this, of course, we always put our shows on, on our YouTube channel in our archive so people can listen to them on demand anytime. And a lot of these things you've told us about will, will be in that description. So anybody listening to this on the air, usually the postal, the show, the on-demand version will post within an hour of the end of the program. Sometimes it takes a little longer, especially this time of year. But we'll get all that stuff in the description too. So I hope folks will pass this along as an asset to other people who might not have heard it on the air. While we're in the holiday season, let's talk about that for just a sec. Now, are there some, are there some things as, as a family goes into the holidays or a couple, that, that should be kept in mind, you think, when dementia is in the mix?
Yes, very definitely. And I'm so glad that you suggested this as a topic, you know, especially this time of year.
Yeah.
That it's really important that, the key word is simplify.
Yeah, okay.
People with dementia, as it says on this nice little blurb that you sent out, people with dementia can still and should be encouraged to enjoy and participate in the spirit of the holiday season. However, because of the way dementia-related illnesses impact the brain, they may not be able to do it exactly had they done prior to the onset of dementia. So you have somebody who may not be able to sit through a, tolerate the confusion of a family gathering.
Right.
So you're going to have to be thoughtful about how you do that, you know? You want to keep decorations simple is one of the things that they're doing that. And again, including that person in this, especially where, depending on where they are in the process.
Sure.
Will, you'll be able to do with it. There was one woman that was telling us what they, what she's doing with her husband. They like to go out to eat, they've always liked to go out to eat, but what she's finding is that he can't tolerate being in a crowded, noisy place anymore.
Sure.
So she's having to be more careful about where she's picking things, you know, where she's taking him.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes it doesn't even work. So she's got to be ready to leave if he starts getting agitated or going to a party. He might be able to take 15 minutes of it, but he's not going to be able to take more than that.
Sure.
Or she, you know, whoever it is.
Sure.
So having, if you're going to go out with, or have people in, you want to be sure that there's somebody who's keyed into and understands what's going on for the person, whether it's your parent or whether it's your spouse or whatever it is, whoever it is, that can, you can turn it over to, especially if you're hosting.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to be sure that that, your person has somebody that is ready to take over, move them into a quieter area. Having things for them to do that they can do.
Yeah.
You don't, and again, that's why it's important to understand where they are because each, each stage or each, TEEPa talks about gems, different levels, you are approaching it from a different place. And again, using support, you're talking about support, not doing for, but supporting the person to do as much as they can themselves.
This article.
Learn how to judge that.
The article also talked about how decorations that you may be used in the past could end up being a problem, especially if they look like food or candy. Somebody with dementia could mistake that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Just heard of the case of that where a person really got into trouble because they thought that this thing was candy and it wasn't, it was something else.
Hmm.
So, you know, keeping, keeping less confusing.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to look at your environment and say, is there too much here? Things hanging from the ceiling, especially if you've got somebody who tends to be hallucinating.
Okay.
You don't want to have things moving around a whole lot. So you may have to really simplify, think about it, to see what works and what doesn't. That's the other way of doing this.
Well, and then we were talking about memory and that, you know, this grieving process, how a person changes over time, that is probably also going to make its way into the holidays if you have done so. If there've been some things you did in the past, whether it's singing as a family or playing some kind of a game or something. And there may be a tendency on the part of a caregiver to sort of become depressed as they see that those past practices, that they can't do those things anymore.
Yeah. That's one of the things that we were talking about in one of my latest groups was that they were talking about the fact that recognizing that their husbands, you know, at this point it's husbands that we're talking about, most of the folks are women, caregivers are women, that they're having to let go of some of the traditions that they've always had in their family, that they've recognizing is too much.
But then another suggestion in here is adapting those traditions or creating new ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's part of it. We need to think creatively. You need to acknowledge the grief, but then, and then, you know, that's where these groups can be helpful, is that you need to acknowledge that, oh, this feels bad. Take time to acknowledge that that's what your feeling is and then try to figure out a way, because we can do this, those of us that still have our capacities, can move, move past it and come up with creative ways of making it still an enjoyable time for everybody.
Yeah.
The other thing you want to be sure about is that you're taking care of yourself, if you're a caregiver.
Oh, right.
You need to make sure that you're not letting go of everything, you know? Include them in what they can do, figure out what they can handle, what they can't, and figure out how to make it enjoyable for both of you. Maybe just going out for a drive to see the Christmas lights.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's interesting, and it's too, it's, you know, of course, the fact that it's in the context of a Chevy truck ad is a little kind of like, eh, but they...
That's a beautiful ad.
That is, so you've seen that one then?
Yes, it's a wonderful one.
So you would encourage, yeah, you highly encourage.
It almost makes you want to run out and get a Chevy.
Yeah, I gotta, all right, now I'm going to have to put a link to that ad in the description.
Oh, dear, oh, dear. No, it's a beautiful ad.
Because you gave it an endorsement, I will, I will embrace it. I will embrace it. Because it is, it is remarkable.
Yeah, the young lady does a beautiful job of that.
Yeah.
They did a nice job of doing it. And it's not going to work every time, that's the other thing. It may work for, you know, it worked in that part. And that's part of that music and she used all kinds of things, really good skills.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they did, they did their homework on that one.
Well, and it's back like we said, you see, there's a lot of portrayals that make you think, eh, don't encourage people to do that, that's, that's just going to make it worse. But then, so, you know, in fairness, we have to celebrate when, when the portrayals are done correctly and, okay, that's good.
And there's more of those coming out.
Oh, good.
And I think that's part of what we're, what we're finding is that more and more people are becoming educated about what works and what... This does not have to be a horrible, horrible thing. It is a horrible thing, don't get me wrong. But it doesn't have to stay a horrible thing.
Yeah.
The care that I'm being able to do with my sister, I've, I've been able to reignite, and I don't know whether it's reigniting or whatever, but anyway, a feeling of real love for my sister that I don't know that I've had before. You know, she was taking care of her own stuff, I was taking care of my own stuff, but now, you know, there's a piece of me that we're able to appreciate each other in a different, whole different way.
Sure.
And so there are joys, there are rewards that you can find, but you have to get past this, you have to get past, you have to acknowledge and get past the feelings.
Well, and see here again, this is where I keep coming back to the assets that you provide because that can be at the, on the website and through calling and talking with you, if that's how people communicate better, is because it can help to build that bridge so you don't come up to the edge of the cliff, feel like you're going to fall off, that you got to take a running start to get across the gap, all these harder ways to bridge the gap. The, your assets can be that bridge that can help to prepare people to, to give them a sense. And it's not like it's going to cure all of the challenges that a caregiver might feel. But it gives you more preparation to be able to, you know, to cross that gap and hopefully land in a place not only that isn't awful, but like you said, may actually provide some positivity.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, think, give us some final thoughts as we sort of wrap up here. What do you, what do you want to leave us with?
Okay, I was going to say, one of my, one of my tenets is feelings are to be felt, but not acted on.
Hmm.
Okay, that we have a frontal lobe, those of us that have still have it, that is what we want to have in control. Now, we're going to have reactions when our, when something happens, you know, our reaction is from this amygdala thingy we have back here or in our middle of our brain, wherever it is, that we find ourselves reacting to something. You know, we either, our fear, freeze or fight. Okay, so we're either going to run, we're going to, we're going to freeze or we're going to fight. The trick is, and a lot of family members talk about this, they'll have a loved one that, or a person that they're caring for that gets really upset really fast and you don't know why it's happening and they're yelling at you or they're doing something know why it's happening, and they're yelling at you, or they're doing something and throwing things, or whatever. Not that all of them do that, I'm just saying that when a person gets really, really frustrated, or really confused and scared, that's, they no longer have the control over, they no longer have the ability to control their reaction.
Sure.
So you, as a caregiver, need to learn how to acknowledge, oop, take a deep breath. If you need to step out of the room, if it's safe to leave, you know, to get yourself back, and then get your frontal lobe engaged, so that you're thinking. Because we can't think about how to respond, because you have to respond, you don't want to react. So feelings are to be felt, we need to acknowledge them. But in some cases, we need to learn how to, practice a lot, to learn how to get that frontal lobe back in operation, so we can respond, rather than reacting.
And education and preparation are the key to that, yeah, yeah.
Exactly. The more we know, the more we're aware that it's not the person that, it's not something I, I may have triggered it unawarily, because I wasn't as skilled as I need to be. And the only way we build skills is practice.
Sure.
And being willing to make mistakes, and then step away from them, and come back with a new way of doing it.
Gay, it's always a pleasure to be able to visit with you. I hope people will take advantage of the opportunity to connect with you, and with the larger organization, take advantage of these assets. Like I said, a lot of the things, the key things that we talked about, I'm going to put in the description of the YouTube version of this, our archive version, at youtube.com/cordovatv. We wish you all the best for wonderful holidays, and look forward to talking to you again next time. It's always so informative.
Yeah, well, let's make it quite so long ago, and I know that's as much me as you.
Yeah, it's funny, we tried to get together...
It's always a pleasure.
We tried to get together in November, you know, which was Awareness Month, we just couldn't line our schedules up, but, you know...
It was like, oh, my goodness. But finally we did it, and it's good. So, JR, can you send me again what the link is, so that if someone on our, in our end wants to take a look at what you've come up with?
Oh, sure, sure. The, it hasn't been created yet, but I'll pass, I'll absolutely pass that along.
No, 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 right.
I hope you guys will feel free to share that anytime, that's our pleasure. And best to you for the end of the year.
Okay, you too, and thank you so much.
Always such an informative conversation when Gay Wellman joins us for Town Meeting. Again, she covered a lot, which is always the case. I mean, practically, she could practically do this show herself. I could just say, Gay Woman, welcome, go for it, and she'd just, she'd just do it. So she's so knowledgeable about all of this. And we are going to put links or more information on a lot of the things that she talked about when we post this show, once we get it wrapped up here on the radio, when it goes to our archive at youtube.com/cordovatv. That's the Cordova TV YouTube channel. And so there'll be things that you can review and click, and it'll all be in the description for this show. Of course, we can't do it without Cordova Wireless Communications. A lot of things we can't do without them and their sister agency, Cordova Telecom Cooperative, because of course, they are able, by the way the business is structured, to generate all that outside money that comes in, millions of dollars, 12 million, I think, was the last estimate, every year. 12 million outside dollars that come in and circulate around through our town. And we don't have to cut down a tree, or catch a fish, or mine anything, or make anything, we just facilitate it by being members of CTC and users of Cordova Wireless Services. Well, it's a powerful economic engine for the town, and the opportunity to share information like this with you, whenever it's requested, is another thing we think is pretty important. So that's why we really enjoy being able to do it. So thanks for the sponsorship of Cordova Wireless. Thanks again, Gay Wellman, Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska.